Call the City Council Meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Eiko Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germaine?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. And before we get started with our invocation and pledge of allegiance, I just want to announce that our Student Advisory Council is here this evening, who will be giving a presentation to council from the work they've done. And as we, after following the invocation, the pledge of allegiance will be led by the Student Advisory Council and student Samuel Albino. We're going to stand for invocation first, please.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
Thank you. Samuel?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item would be citizens' comments not related to an agenda item.
Are there any comments from those present there here this evening not related to an agenda item? Any comments those present wish to be made? Seeing no comments? Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is, do we have a need to amend the agenda?
Oh, that's right. Guess we should do that, too. Any amendments to the agenda, council, administration?
No.
No amendments? Next item, please.
The next item is a presentation. Item number 2018 Monroe Public Schools Student Advisory Council Presentation.
Thank you. And Mark Cochran is going to have a short introduction. And Superintendent Julie Everly will also speak before we hear from the students. Mark?
Honorable Mayor and council, I have the privilege tonight to introduce our Student Advisory Council, just for background purposes. I believe the Student Advisory Council was just an idea that Julie and I had at public house one day on how we can partner between the city and public schools. And then I spoke with the mayor and Vince and Clerk Treasurer about the idea. But it really fits in perfect with one of this year's council goals and objectives, which was to promote community engagement programs. And so what Monroe Public Schools did was identified students who were grades elementary through high school to work with us at the city. Because the reason behind it is we work hard every day to build a better community. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is build a community for the next generation. And so we thought it was appropriate to form the council to give us advice and counsel on what kind of city they would like to see us grow and develop for when they become adults. And so really proud of the work that they've done this year. Brainstorming different ideas that they would like to tackle and different issues. Really surprised by the maturity of the suggestions that they had as well. So looking forward to seeing the presentation tonight. And Julie, if you'd like to say a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Mayor Clark, City Council, it's our pleasure to be with you this evening. And just wanted to comment and thank all of you for supporting this partnership between the city of Monroe and Monroe Public Schools. It has been one that we've seen really nurture and blossom over the last year. And these students are a huge part of that. From our academic side, we always think about how can we give students the opportunity to develop their citizenship, their voices, and to have them communicate themselves in appropriate, effective ways. And I think that you'll see a demonstration of that tonight. I couldn't be prouder of the relationship we have with the city of Monroe and also the experience that this has provided for these students. So thank you so much for having us tonight.
My name is Jessica Stamper, and I'm a senior at Monroe High School.
And I'm Kaylee Hill. I'm 11th grader from Orchard Center High. And the topic that we have for you today are what are our concerns, interests, and ideas for our community?
So when we first came together, we all had a lot of really good and different ideas. And so we all brought them all together at the table, and then we all just kind of talked about how we felt about them and what we thought was important. And I think what we came up with was really surprising to everybody there.
From sidewalk issues to limited activities for our youth to do, the citizens can see that there's a change that needs to be made. Along with mental health educations and substance abuse awareness, it shows that the people of our city find these problems important enough to try to raise awareness. It was really great to see all the great ideas and opinions that our group had to better the city of Monroe.
Hi, my name is Jazin Oakley. I'm in 10th grade, and I go to Orchard Center High School. So we had four papers with good ideas, but we knew that we wanted to focus our efforts and our energies to new action items to start to ensure that we can make a difference short term and down the road.
Hi, I'm Colin. I go to Monroe High. I'm in 9th grade. On the four pictures you see here, we used colorful stickers to decide our main goals and issues. We pinpointed three main issues that had been going on in Monroe. We all agreed on these three issues, which were homeless assistance, lower age work requirements, and community center. And to do all this, we need you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin, and I go to Monroe High School, and I'm in 9th grade.
Hello, my name is Samuel. I'm in 6th grade, and I go Waterloo Elementary. We will be talking about our short-term goals. As said by the last group, we picked our three main ideas: homelessness assistance, community centers, and lower age work requirement. We decided to try and find hunger statistics from FeedingAmerica.org. We found that in Monroe, 10.4% or 15,600 people in Monroe alone don't know where their next meal is coming from. To learn more about community centers, we decided to visit the ALCC, or known as the Arthur Leslow Community Center. We took a tour around the center to find out what goes on there. We learned that the ALCC serves meals to kids and the elderly that are in need of food.
We wrote a grant and worked with MCLP to host a Global Youth Service Day Mobile Food Pantry at Arborwood. We served over seven tons of food and over 400 people. Also, in our schools, we had a Global Youth Service Week food drive and collected thousands of food items. And this is the group that helped us with volunteering at our food drive.
So our long-term goals were that we had a food drive and the annual mobile food pantry, and that was a great start to everything that we wanted to do. We wanted to raise awareness that these events that happen are available to the citizens of Monroe. Because we know a lot of people weren't aware that these were happening.
Also, after our trip to the ALCC, we now understand the importance of the youth, the community center, and all the great things they have to offer. Having a place such as the ALCC that people can consider to be a second home for those who might not have one is amazing for our community and should be advertised more than it is. Other long-term goals, such as hunger, was one that was brought into the discussion. And ideas such as planting fruit trees along public areas for the homeless to eat summer long was definitely something that we looked into. We can all stand here and speak about the problems and issues that we feel that need to be made or changed. But if no one is putting any actions toward changing those, then they're just sparks with no match.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm from the middle school. I'm in 8th grade. We are the future, and we have a vision as of what Monroe could and should be for our generation. Our vision of Monroe begins by creating awareness of the issues we discussed earlier in our presentation.
We wanted to make support groups in the community center more public and, like, accessible to people around Monroe.
Hello, I'm Mason. I go to Monroe Middle School, and I'm in 8th grade.
Hello, my name is Eliana. I go to Monroe Elementary School, and I'm in 6th grade.
We are so proud of what we have done so far, but this is far from being over. Thanks to Mayor Clark, Mrs. Lavoy, and Mr. Cochran, we couldn't have done anything without them.
We also want to thank MCLP, specifically Mrs. Cass, for assistance with our ventures for this whole school year. Before we wrap things up, we want you to take consideration that as the years pass, we may move on, but our impact and ideas for Monroe will stay. Thank you.
You or Julie have just a kind of follow-up? I know, go ahead.
Absolutely. I think our students definitely have demonstrated that they are very, very thoughtful about their vision for the city, about their vision for the future. You can see we, in our planning sessions, we predicted some of the things that the students may ask about or want to take initiatives around. And they just exceeded our every expectation, both in their thinking, but also in their heart. So I think we have some fine citizens that are developing here.
Very nice.
So thank you so much for allowing them to speak, allowing this time. And I'm confident that they could handle any questions that you may have and would enjoy that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make a comment because as when Mark and Julie started the conversation, I was with other administration for the public schools. And then our elected Clerk Treasurer, Michelle Lavoy, and I are able to be a participant through the sessions and listen and watch as they went through their message boards and prioritization. And it wasn't about just, you know, playgrounds and students and things about children. It was about serious topics, mental health, and how to have support groups at the community center for a student at the end of their day that might have a need or a challenge and want to have a conversation with an adult, or a peer. And some things they're going through in their life at a time when it's critical right then to have that opportunity. So they came to us with some short goals today, but we know there's some long goals that they have as well. And they're very well aware of our budget session and when that starts next January. So I anticipate we may be seeing some follow-ups with those that are still partnering. And I want to give Michelle an opportunity, some comments, because she's been a participant along the way as well.
Really, I echo everything that you said, and I want to congratulate you on a great presentation tonight. And you commanded attention from us the moment you sat down at those tables in the room on the third floor. And you led the discussions, and you led the direction, and you've led us to this point tonight. You led us to that food drive, and I can't wait to see where else you lead us. So keep doing what you're doing. Sky's the limit, working together or as individuals. I think you have great things coming. So thank you for sharing your talents with us, and keep it up.
Good. Mark, any final comments? Please.
So I just want to say, well done again, very proud of you, and I look forward to next year. I know we've got some graduating seniors who are part of our program this year. And we welcome them to come back and continue the dialogue and the projects with us next year, as well as welcoming new members from not only Monroe Public Schools, but also St. Mary's Catholic Central has also reached out and asked if they can be part of the Student Advisory Council as well. So look forward to next year.
Thanks, Mark. John?
I have a question for Mark or for Julie. It was an awesome job, kids. You guys did a great job. You really did. And I think you hit it out of the park. Nice job. Question I have is, they went through, obviously, consensus building on prioritizing what their three top priorities were, which is a really good thing, because that helps determine short and long-term goals. But I'm really interested, because I really couldn't see it. I'm really interested in what was on the four pages that really didn't score high, because that also shows what some of their concerns are relative to the community. So the question I have is, can we get a list of those?
They're in my office.
Okay.
So we'll copy it and send it out.
I'd like to see all of the ideas that they came up with.
Yep.
Counselman, that's a good point. Those were kind of, they'd already been kind of whittled down a little bit. And there's another sheet that had so many on there, they realized that they couldn't achieve those short or long-term for what the timeframe they were operating within. And they got to those sheets and had the bullet points, and then they started doing the, you know, the dots of what they found important. So it was a collective group, so.
I'm so pleased to hear you asked that, Councilman Eiko Angeli. Also, because so many of the issues that they had on those lists, they're quality of life issues for themselves, but also for their friends who they were representing. We talked a lot about as a representative, you not only represent your own interests, but the interests of those who live around you, in your neighborhoods, and who attend your schools. So I think those items that you see on those lists will be very thought-provoking.
Great, thank you.
It was really interesting, too, because after the first session, when we challenged them to come back with their ideas and proposals, I know a lot of them said they went home and talked to their family, they went to church and talked to fellow congregation members, and they really took their leadership role seriously. And so it was difficult, I think, to nail down all of the topics that they talked about into three. But as the mayor alluded to, we talked about SMART goals, things that, throughout the school year, because we only met once a month. And so they also did a lot of work in between the meetings that we had here at City Hall on what was specific and measurable and realistically achievable this school year.
Yeah. Just to give you an idea of how dedicated and with such passion they approached this, we had a Google Classroom, which is like an online forum where they could discuss their ideas between meetings. And the level of engagement that they had, we're so pleased about that.
You know, the idea that the group came up with homelessness, the community center, and attacking hunger in the community for young adults that are in middle school and high school is absolutely incredible, in my opinion. Because typically, you would see things like better parks, you know, a better downtown, those type of issues come up. But these are not only quality of life issues, but these are really community issues at heart. So I mean, that's pretty impressive, actually, from the group of young adults coming up with those. Very impressive.
I think what shows their drive as well is the third goal that they wanted to work on was lowering the age requirement to get a job. And so they want to work either to make money, but also to volunteer and to make a difference in the community. So I think that's one of the long-term things that we're going to take a look at for next year.
That's great.
And really, that they see themselves as worthy participants and citizens of this community. We talked a lot about how can we help with the opioid crisis? How can we help get students who don't feel engaged in the community to connect with Monroe? So absolutely, very, very invested in very deep ways.
You guys did a great job. I was really impressed by your presentation. Thank you for coming. My question is, how would a student go about joining your group? And if I or other agencies wanted to reach out and invite your group to attend events or come speak with other students, who would we contact?
If a student is interested in becoming a part of the youth council, they can just let their principal know, who then will let us know. And then all contacts for public appearances for the council. Mr. Hoppert, Andrew Hoppert here, serves as their booking agent. He would be happy to coordinate any of that, and they would be delighted to speak with other community groups.
Mr. Hoppert is at the high school, am I correct?
He's right at the administration building.
At the ad building, okay.
So it's 265-3000.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great job. Great job. Thank you for being here. And I'm looking forward to seeing what you bring to us next year in our budget session and some long-term goals.
We're really excited that some of our students who are seniors are attending Monroe Community College. So we really foresee that the council could become an elementary through 14 group of youth from Monroe. So thank you again, Mayor Clark.
Great job.
Good job.
Looking forward to seeing you guys again.
Very nice.
So next, we'll move forward. Next item, please.
The next item is a proclamation.
Students know they won't be here with us the entire evening. Thank you again. We have a proclamation. I'm just going to read part of it here this evening. It pertains to Arbor Day. It's not a presentation that we're doing this evening. And as we know, we did Arbor Day with the Arborwood School last year, and I think there's some opportunities for that coming this year as well. But there is a date that's set for this presentation is on May 19th, because the Rotary Club of Monroe is wanting to partner on Arbor Day this year. So they have planned on May 19th to do some tree planting and presentation, which will be on Maple Boulevard. Then, of course, Mr. Lewis will be able to provide counsel with the exact location on that as it approaches. But as many of you know, we've been a participant with Arbor Day for many, many years, decades. And the city of Monroe is still recognized as a Tree City USA for National Arbor Day Foundation. And we always emphasize the importance of planting trees and the betterment of our community. I think last year, from the council, showed that as well, as we put forward a significant effort along with our forestry and DPS staff of getting those trees planted, but also plans for this year as well. I'm not going to read it all, as I said, but I just want to let you know what the proclamation is for and will be presented on May 19th. Clerk Treasurer.
The next item is public hearing, item 2021, public hearing to receive and review comments on the vacation of the alley on the Lincoln School site. And we do not have any comments on file in clerk's office.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing on item 2021 to receive and review comments regarding the vacation of the alley on the former Lincoln School site. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this public hearing? Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item number 2021, resolution to vacate alley at Lincoln School site.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to vacate the alley at the Lincoln School site.
Second. Motion by Councilman Eiko Angeli, supported by Councilman Lamore on item 2021. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item is the consent agenda, and under item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $502,168.65. 502-168.65.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? None from council? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items from those present here this evening? Seeing none? Motion be in order.
Your Honor.
Councilman Vining?
I'll make a motion that all the items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed, and filed, and the recommendations carried out.
motion by Councilman Vining, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed, and filed, recommendations carried out, and resolution adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
So go to council comments, and it is May. Councilman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to congratulate Seth Gagne on being sworn in this morning as the newest city public safety officer in these council chambers. It was a great ceremony. I give all the praise to the chief for what he presented this morning. It was great. Also, another news item here, Cultivate Monroe. I got an update for that. The date is set for Saturday, June 16th. There are currently 11 teams in place. There are 11 houses that have been assigned to receive the work to be done by those teams. If you'd like more information or to get involved, don't hesitate to call Jason Matthews. His phone number is 734-363-3216. If anybody's not familiar with Cultivate Monroe, it's more or less an action by this group to beautify some homes in the Orchard East area. It sounds like a great idea. It's going to be the inaugural year. I really look forward to supporting this.
That's it, Your Honor. Councilman Felder?
Well, it was just wonderful to see the Student Advisory Council here tonight. I just thought that was wonderful, some young leaders in the community. Someone more my age, I guess. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman?
I have no comments this evening.
Councilman Eiko Angeli?
Your Honor, I was wondering if we had in the mayor and council budget sufficient funds maybe to, before the kids get out of school, that we're here this evening maybe to buy them a, have them buy them a pizza lunch or something and tell them thanks. I think that's an expression on our part of the hard work that they did, which I think was pretty cool. I'll leave that up to the discretion of the mayor.
I'll follow up, and I'll let council know.
Okay.
If there's within the mayor's budget with the recognitions and promotions type item, I can find something, make sure to get them.
Thank you. And then I noticed in the evening news that ALCC had made a presentation to the county board of commissioners. But I didn't see in the article that the ALCC board either asked for contribution or, and I didn't see where the county board offered to give them a contribution. I know that there was a lot of pleasantries back and forth on the value of ALCC. I would hope that the county would reinstitute or reestablish the contribution that it used to make to ALCC, which it, I think, was in the amount of $35,000 or $40,000 a year. So I hope they would find that in their budget to reinstitute that. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
Your Honor, yes, I read that article as well. And there was some statement made in the article that the county has supported the ALCC over the years. And I hope that they'll begin to support that with a monetary allocation to the ALCC. I didn't see it in their budget for this year, but hopefully next year. Also, we had two great events. We had the Selma Rankins Community Garden kickoff party, block party, work party. We got a lot of, it looks a lot better over there, so we don't want to get any blights or anything. But we got it really cleaned up, and the city was kind enough to bring the trash can back. That's always really helpful, keeping it clean. We had tons of kids, and the fire department came out. And Oaks of Righteousness and ALCC supported us as well. The grant that the college offered us, it's an extremely slow-moving process. So we've been out kind of door-to-door begging. So I have a lot of ask out there and no final answers. But apparently, the garden is under the community college grant for urban farming. So hopefully, we'll see some funds come in soon. We got to get the plants in the ground in the next few weeks. Also, we had the literacy fair. Artico came out and read to the kids. That was a lot of agencies, the Labor Council, ALCC, the library, great start. That was really great. There were a lot of vendors there, the fire department, the police department, a lot of the city departments. It was a really good event. So I said all that to say that ALCC is really working hard to make these community connections and participate in all the events that we can, and also... And also to continue to invite the community to come down and have their events and their programs at our place. So it was good to see all of that activity. Agencies and different VIPs from across the county come out and support. Lake Erie Transit had a bus there and made a donation to ALCC. And we're very grateful and thankful for that. So yeah, there's a lot going on at ALCC. We're trying to live up to the city's expectations. And the ball is rolling pretty well so far. So I'm very hopeful that we'll continue in this same vein. So look for us to be doing a lot of programming and things like that over the summer. We also had an anti-bullying program at ALCC this week, and it very well attended. It was packed out with children. So can never go wrong with anti-bullying. So yeah, so I just wanted to let the community know. And there's upcoming events. The ALCC is also involved with the Cultivate community. We'll be hosting lunch that day. So yeah, that's what I wanted to say about ALCC. Thank you.
Alston? Councilwoman Germaine?
I just want to say how proud I am of the vision of our youth here in Monroe, because they're the future of Monroe. So they're going to replace us. Very proud of them. That's all.
Okay. I have a few comments. I'll start, again, giving credit and kudos to the Student Advisory Council for the hard work. And we'll look into seeing what we can, from the council, we can make some recognition and help them along for the end of the school year. It was enjoyable. I look forward to them coming back in the fall and starting again as we get into next year. I mentioned Arbor Day. Just want to put the date again. There will be with the Rotary Club of Monroe on Saturday, May 19th. It's on Maple Boulevard. I'm sure it'll be on our website, exactly where it is in the crossroads where some of those plantings are going on. There's multiple plantings going on in the area, as well as at Arborwood. But there's some opportunities to kind of bring that around through the community. Third thing is one of our downtown businesses is kind of championing the Monroe Amazing Rally, which is on Sunday, May 20th, at 1:30 PM. It's kind of teams that is benefiting Racing for a Cure. The proceeds for that will be going to the Monroe County Relay for Life. I'm going to hold the flyer while I finish, because it's kind of big. But I appreciate the council's support on the appointment tonight, also to the DDA, which is for an unexpired term. And the person that was appointed is the person that's kind of championing this cause in the downtown involvement. He was also involved with something this past weekend with the downtown. So I want to get some of that encouragement and more participation downtown, whether it's for a fun event or for items that are along to the DDA. So I will let Mr. Williams know. And of course, there's a number here. I'm going to read it in case anybody wants to call him. Call him a lot. I'm sure they'd still add some teams. It's from two to six people. Kind of just walking and moving around downtown, different sites. And then there are going to be a gathering at McGady's afterwards. And of course, it's for a good cause and the Relay for Life. Next item I have is the Downtown Cleanup Day. It's Saturday, May 12th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. They're going to meet at Loringer Square. There'll be, we'll see some of the gloves and trash bags around. But if you could, bring some gloves or rakes, because sometimes they run out. But that's a volunteer opportunity, Downtown Monroe, Loringer Square, on May 12th. 9:00 AM is the start time. Speaking of downtown, we talk about safety downtown. And this is a little bit different. It's about bicycle safety. Obviously, we have people that are downtown that ride their bikes, and some will ride as appropriate in the street and going with the flow of traffic. Unfortunately, we have others that find it best to travel on the sidewalks, which is not permissible by our ordinance. But that aside, there's those that are very cautious and concerned as they ride their bikes to the downtown, and we don't usually have mishaps. Unfortunately, a couple of weeks or so, we had a significant impact with one of our business owners as they stepped out. And the person was riding way too fast, and unfortunately, he's had serious injuries and needed medical assistance and is still recovering. So this is just a message that pedestrians and bicyclists just obviously need to proceed cautiously. And the ordinance from the downtown is not permissible to ride your bike on the sidewalks. And there's been some other near examples of crashes here in the last few weeks. Again, we start, and then the weather changes. We always talk about children getting out of school, and that motorists should be aware of that. There are more children out on the streets and crossing the street. But we have to keep the same mindful manner how we operate on bicycles in the downtown and not to ride them on the sidewalk, especially not at a high rate of speed. Next reminder I have is because things changed, and as the weather got better, these things, everything starts growing, including the grass. So we've had a great reduction last year in the reports of people that were violating the grass ordinance of eight inches. But still, we had 653 reports last year. And we should be able to reduce that even more. And hopefully, people are getting to their lawns and that this year. Even though it's late, it just seems to be growing rapidly right now. So I'd ask the residents, please be mindful of that. But also, as a resident, you have the ability, if you think that somebody in your neighborhood or in the city is not keeping up with what they should be. The city's website, through the My Civic, it's real simple. It's just on the front page, and it says, "Report." There's a whole list of items, whether it be grass, blight, abandoned vehicles sitting in the backyards, abandoned vehicles on the street, things like that. There's a whole menu of items. And again, that goes back to when that presentation was given from the Communications Director, Egan, how easy it is to simply go on and report. And that's how we help each other get things removed in blight. My last item, and I'm going to really leave it to the clerk, is the election. So I'm only going to say, because I know the clerk, Chazelle Lavoy, will be talking about that, which is tomorrow. So.
Yes, so I just wanted to remind everyone that there is an election tomorrow in the city. It's regarding the Monroe Public Schools. That's the only set of questions on the ballot. And we have the polling locations open at 7:00. Polling locations were not consolidated for this election, so go to where you normally would in the city to vote. And we're all ready for you. So I hope you're ready for us, and you show up at the polls, and we have a good, successful election.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Pass, do any comments? With that, citizens' comments. Comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Frank Chivatsky, 116 Hollywood Drive. I have just three short comments. The first one is on, kind of had a little embarrassing situation here last week. One of the downtown people in a wheelchair was having some trouble with his wheelchair and was outside the front of the Knights of Columbus. And evidently, he couldn't wave down the buses, and about four of them had gone by, the Lake Erie buses. And I and other people were trying to help resolve the situation. He was having some mechanical problems with his mechanical wheelchair. And he, so I got my truck and came downtown here, because I knew there's a bus station down here. Talked to Mike, who kind of saved the day. He did a good job. He called the, one of the other bus drivers or the dispatcher, somebody, and got a bus over and helped the guy out. So that was great. The bad part was, myself and another individual called the dispatch office three times. Evidently, there's a rule, probably a reasonable rule, but just not a criticism, just something that slipped through the system here. Is I know the city supports the bus system with a lot of money and to help our more vulnerable citizens. But there's a rule that says that they have to be at a designated bus stop. Well, he did not have the ability to do that. So I would like the city to request that the Lake Erie Transit investigate that situation and respond back with maybe an exemption for people with wheelchairs. If they, maybe you can just wave their hand, and that bus driver would be allowed to pick them up without a big deal. Most, all the bus drivers know all the guys by name. Mike knew, right, who I was talking about? And that's enough about that.
We'll make an inquiry final with their policies on that and have a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other thing, property number 5901166000, which I'll give the clerk this copy. The federal government has waived their responsibilities for the property. And the city now can proceed, if they choose to, to condemn the property that's been pretty much vacant since 2010. I'd like them to, maybe at next city council meeting, they could maybe, or call me or give me a letter back on what's going on with that piece of property, because it missed the deadline because of this federal lien on the property for the monies that were, the city applies for to demolish properties and stuff. But my request is, at least they condemn it. But that's enough said about that.
And then the third is. Before that, the clerk, I'm sure, it'll make its way to the city manager to follow up on.
If I may, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Also, this property that I think Frank's alluding to, we have ongoing discussions with the city attorney and I at our regular meetings about what the status of it is. And so we've been monitoring. I know Mr. Bus is monitoring quite a bit of that development with that particular property and another one as well that this individual owns here in town.
Thank you.
The third item is on what used to be, while the address is 20, the city owns it. It's at 20, I think it's 20 and 22 West Front Street, the brand-new parking lot entrance between the, right around the, anyway, they tore down the building and entrance there. I'd like to request that maybe the engineering department could look and see if it would be feasible to put in a handrail there. In the wintertime, it's all to code. Everything's fine. It's just it's slippery, and it is going down a hill. And I noticed in between the UNI bar and the next building, there are handrails there, obviously for the same reason. So I just would like that they would maybe look into that if they would, because it's, I've slipped. I've caught myself. But you'd need a crane to get me up if I fell down, so.
There's on the sidewalk there, where the goes down.
It would be between the real tall building, where the Fox Club used to be, and the UNI bar. There's a sidewalk there.
Got it. Back to the city manager, and I did talk about that here just a few days ago, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
If I may just follow up on that. You know, Patrick and I have had a discussion as well. Once he kind of gets a little further along with all of the projects that he has in design and out to bid, you know, we'll take a look at it. And then even last fall, Councilmember Whitman and Councilmember Raffco, at the time, talked with me there at the branch over on Monroe there with the sewing building there. They probably should look at some sort of railing going down that area as well. So Patrick and I have, those two, Your Honor, listen and take a look at that.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Other public comments? Seeing none?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to get a legal status updates.
Second. By Councilman Michael Angeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman. We go in closed executive session. City Attorney, client privileged correspondence. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angelie?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine? Mayor Clark?
Yes.